All right, good evening. I'd like to call the Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't have any announcements. And is there anyone here for anything that is not currently on our agenda? And seeing is none. We can move right to the first agenda item, which is North Brown LLC, an amendment to the regulatory agreement and possible votes. Modification to the comprehensive person. So what exactly are they looking for here, Matt?
So as you know, this is a so-called LISP project, local partnership. The Board of Selectmen is designatory to the comprehensive permit. And the comprehensive permit is an agreement between you and the developer. When they look for amendments, they need to ask for you to sign off. And after requesting the zoning board's opinion on the matter back in April, the zoning board issued this decision to you. Their views that modifications requested are insubstantial. And they are at the bottom of the first page. And that Phase 4 may proceed before Phase 3. The sales price for the affordable units will be adjusted in accordance with market trends. And that enforcement of the terms of the permit will be done by the building commissioner. Because the permit specifically designated the town engineer, the vacancy in that position, the building commissioner, who is also the zoning enforcement officer, is doing the duties.
Did they, I guess I only have one question of why are they skipping 3 and going to 4, Phase 3?
The way it was set up, it's in a circle and then there's a line down through the center of it. So the 1 and 2 go to the left of the circle comes up. 3 would have went down the back, 3 would have went back down the backside of it and 4 would have came down through the middle of it. It would have been for construction traffic and stuff, this was the logic behind it. It would be disruptive to that neighborhood. It would make more sense to complete that first loop, come down through the center of it, connect the water and sewer there, and then they could do the outer phase without impacting that neighborhood.
Oh, it makes sense.
Good thing I remembered.
Yeah, it is. Good thing you remembered.
All right.
Do you know how many units? I'm just curious, nothing to do with this, but how many units in total they're going to have there?
Hundred and twenty-eight, sixty-four duplexes.
I forget how many permits we've issued already.
Phase 1 and 2 is complete for all the permits and his heat foundations issued, which is now Phase 3.
So about forty units into out of sixty-four, roughly?
Yeah.
How's their marketing coming?
I think there's fifteen, fifteen buildings per.
I think they sell them as fast as they build them.
Yeah.
They're pre-selling them.
Yeah.
Probably getting the premium price, too.
The affordable rate went from 186 up anything to either 226 or 246.
And that's still considered affordable?
248, four.
According to this document, yeah.
And I think they've been averaging over 400 a unit.
And the affordable, that's?
On the regular base, on the market rates, the affordable's at 248.
And that falls under affordable housing guidelines, or?
It goes based on income. Medium income.
I don't even get to vote on this.
Yeah. Anybody have any thoughts or anything else? I guess if the zoning board and highway and everybody else was okay with it.
Make a motion that we amend the regulatory agreement citing the insubstantial changes.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
The only other thing that was added to that, the building commissioner is now the point of contact for them instead of the town engineer.
Right.
Which is a good thing. It's working out well so far.
Well, good. All right, any other discussion on this? Seeing is none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Planning board, proposed zoning amendment for restaurants and possible votes.
Mike printed those for us.
All right, trying to hunt that down in my packet.
Matthew.
All right.
So just by way of introduction, before our EDC members come up, when a zoning change is proposed at town meeting, the process is a little bit stilted, but it's required by statute that there be an original discussion with the Board of Selectmen. The selectmen refer the matter to the planning board for a public hearing. And the planning board will have the hearing and then generate a recommendation to town meeting. So that's, now this is a little bit different in that the Economic Development Commission went to the planning board to suggest edits. The planning board voted on edits. It's coming to you only to be sent back to the planning board. But planning board didn't have a member to attend tonight. It was kind of quick notice. The chair is out of town. So the original proponents from the Economic Development Commission are here to speak to the merits of the matter.
Yes.
Just for clarity, how much input do we have into this? Do we get into discussion about this in depth at any point? Or is it just a recommendation back to the planning board?
You can, I think you can opine anytime you desire to. If you have specific questions or concerns that the planning board should address at its public hearing, now would be the time.
Okay. No, I just want to make sure so I wasn't going somewhere we shouldn't be.
Now, in terms of access to the warrant, it's your warrant. You can put the matter on, but it can also be petitioned on.
Thank you.
You guys want to come up?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Is Carol here to keep you in control, Bob?
I'm economic development and Bob here is a town economic development coordinator. Basically, you know, it's, I think you people know what it's about. It's a zoning thing that will allow restaurants in the VR zone by special permit. So it gives the planning board, you know, a lot of control over it. And, you know, the towns allow this. Oxbridge, of course, has the Ox locale and so we think, you know, first the restaurants should be, you know, service to the people, but mostly it's income, tax income. So that's one of the things, is economic development that we're looking for.
Oh, we like income.
And a lot of these zoning bylaws are 20 years old. They need to be updated.
Right.
And we're getting to the point where it's activity in the VR zone. And it's time to maybe change the zoning bylaw. What the EDC did was vote to, if you look at the strip, they voted to change the N, which is not allowed in the VR zoning district, to VA, which is zoning board, special permit by the zoning board. We took that recommendation from the EDC, brought it to the planning board. They made changes to change everything to a special permit by the planning board because this area is one-stop shop. And that's where it sits right now in front of you. The recommendation you have is from the planning board. They revised the EDC recommendation. So what you have is the final version right now. They just crossed out zoning board, put in planning board.
Do you agree with their recommendations or their changes?
I've got reservations. I can go either way.
I agree with it.
I agree with the one-stop shopping. An applicant might have to go between two boards. And there are some places in the use regulations that should stay zoning board.
Do you have any thoughts, Mike?
Well, I have thoughts. I'm just waiting for the opportunity. That's all I can try everybody else. I agree with the fact that it should go through the planning board. And this was after a discussion with Matt on way back before he was even on this board. It gives the applicant an opportunity for an appeal versus going to court. So if they go to somebody other than the zoning board of appeals, at least they have a mechanism in which to appeal if or somebody that was against the proposal could appeal without going to court. So that makes sense to me. The putting this in, I printed these out for everybody. Actually, I got two of them here. I don't know.
Yeah, we got them. This is.
This is the map of that same parcel land. I don't even see it. So if you look at that, the white on either side of that strip, this is down the Manchuck Road where Douglas Flores is, that's all RA down there. The yellow strip is the only village residential. But if you pull up the property cards on all those abutting houses, with the exception of if you're holding the paper upright, the lower right-hand lot, that would be village residential on the property card there. All the rest are say RA on them. RA requires 200 feet of frontage and 90,000 square feet. Village residential requires 100 square feet and 20,000. If you look on the village business, when you get to the, let me just look and see where it is so I can read it properly. So under restaurants on village business, 20,000 square feet, 100 feet of frontage and no front setback. So you have zero. You could come up to the sidewalk. So basically like the goodness store or something like that. Well, if you put this in a village residential, and the village residential houses have to be set back from 50 feet from the road, is what it says here. So now you have the houses back, you have a business up front. Some of the village residential could be up by the common. There's no sewerage up there. So you need a place in order to put your septic systems and parking and your site plan review could be an issue. A thought that I had, and it's just a thought, that if you look at restaurants under RC1 and RC2, they're both by special permit, whether it stays with zoning or goes to planning board, whatever happens with that. I would suggest that we consider using RA because the subject property that we even, that even triggered this was the Douglas Flores down there. So you can't do spot zoning. But if all the surrounding properties are already RA and you make that approval into the RA district and you just change this little map, get rid of that village business, village residential in that small section, they're already considered RA anyways, it would solve both problems. And you could still maintain your setback. You'd have plenty of space in order to put a restaurant, whatever the restaurant may be. That's another topic. A restaurant is a pretty wide description. Could be McDonald's or Burger King. Or it could be the 110 Grill.
That would be fast food. And there is a definition for fast food versus restaurant.
You're saying restaurant, but that's not how it was proposed. So if it's excluding fast food, I guess you could include that. But that's a minor thought on my part. The biggest thing is being in a village residential, how would that impact the other? There's a lot of village residential around and it's a pretty broad area. If we're considering, really considering one section of town for a property that would suit this, and you already have RA there and it requires more area anyways, it would probably be more suitable for that type of application.
If you're talking about Manchuck Road property, basically it's, even though other parts of it, of these particular lots are RA, where you build, the area where the building is taking place is the zoning that rules. And these things would be built in that yellow zone. And you can check with town council on that, but.
Yeah, no, I don't need to check with town council. What I had explained, what I suggested was that you actually take that yellow out of there and make it all RA for that little tail that sticks out towards Manchuck. Because all those properties that are listed along that little section that you're in, on their property card says RA.
We did discuss that at the EDC meeting. And we thought it was a very lengthy process to rezone an entire section of town. Why was it so?
I don't know if it's rezoning an entire section of town. And we did the exact same thing down with the grammar school, the parking lot behind the post office and that building that Tapley owns. We rezoned that one on, what's that, leasing court?
Well, we rezoned industrial land behind on Davis Street.
Yeah, so it wasn't a lengthy, you made the suggestion and it went to town meeting.
But you're talking individual homes, not an industrial section.
If I own a piece of property and all of a sudden they come in and they say to me, we're rezoning, red flags are going up and I don't like it, okay? And I think that's exactly what these people would be thinking. So wait a minute, what, we're rezoning me? What for? Why? Do they have 200 feet of frontage? Do they all have 200 feet of frontage? From what I look like here, it doesn't look like they all have 200 feet of frontage.
I don't know. I didn't measure it.
So if they don't have 200 feet of frontage, you rezone them RA. They want to put a deck on their house. Now they got to go for zoning variance because they're in an RA zone and they don't have the 200 feet of frontage. So I'd be totally against rezoning that area.
Yeah. What would you do with the frontage setback?
What's the problem? So it's 50 feet back, that's what you got to do.
No, that's not, no, 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 no. In village business, it says there is no minimum on the setback.
But this is not village business.
It's a village residential.
This is village residence.
I understand that.
So if they want to build in a village business zone, well, then they would have it. If they want to do this in a village residence, then they're going to have to put up with the 50 feet. That's all. You know what it is when you go into it.
And special permit gives you control. You can even deny it at that point. If it's not, if there's enough neighborly opposition, the planning board can deny it. That's their option.
Yeah, they have the option. That's what's good about the planning board. It gives them control. You know, there's some control over this, over what happens.
And a certain amount of flexibility.
Right, right. They have the flexibility, right.
Well, Matt, tonight, we can just, we just would be passing it over to the planning board. We don't necessarily, we get another crack at it later after we see what the planning board.
But if you want their conversation to follow some of your concerns.
Yeah, and that's all it is. I'm not looking to make a decision. This is just up for a conversation to bring out points. That's all it is. That's why I asked Matt at the beginning, how far we get into the conversation. So it's just points brought out, so.
And you can even come to the public hearing.
Oh, no, I know that.
And voice your opinion. Or as a board, submit it. Planning board will review your recommendations as part of the special hearing.
So the bare bones is just to ask the planning board to consider the, this?
Yeah, the formality would be to take a vote, to send it to the planning board, the major of the process. But if you want to add to that motion and say, concerns we'd like you to address, you could do that.
I would really not want to see the waters muddied. And that's, I think, what's going to happen if you start saying you're going to rezone the area and everything.
Well, we're not making that decision. All of us, this conversation and the suggestion, that's all it is.
Right, and then if you bring it back, if you bring it back to the planning board, now they're going to talk about it, or now we're going to, then we're going to talk about it.
That's the whole purpose of public hearings is to talk about it.
And it's not even going to go to the full meeting. What's going to happen?
Send it on to them.
It's not like it's our only bite at the apple. Or is it our only bite at the apple?
No, you'll have plenty of time if you.
Comes back to us whether we want to put on a warrant. We can send it back to the planning board then if we weren't happy with it.
Yeah, obviously anybody that it affects is the one that need to voice their opinion at these public hearings. It's just thoughts that were brought up, that's all.
No, I, that's part of what makes it fun, right?
Yeah, that's what public hearings are for, is discussion.
It's an interesting location. I couldn't actually see that happening.
I still say we need a sushi restaurant.
Get this done and.
Or at least a decent.
A good Bulgarian restaurant would be nice, too.
Sure.
The only concern I have is what's it open up to if you, it's a pretty broad area in order to allow it, so. That was the only concern I had.
Well, we're not allowing it. We're allowing the further discussion and review of someone's idea.
If it gets voted in by special permit, it opens up the door for being allowed. So yeah, if there was a good reason why you wanted to allow it, you can't pick and choose where it's going to go.
Right, but if neighbors object to it loud enough, they can stop them.
Yeah, no.
And the planning board will listen to them.
I get that 100% Bob.
Yeah, I don't think we need to decide tonight exactly what it's going to look like. I think we were interested enough to want to send it over to the planning board to get them to work it through and then we can give it further input later when it comes back to us, so.
They already massaged it once.
Yeah, right.
I'm sure they're going to massage it again when you send it back to them.
I'll move that we recommend to the planning board that they consider the proposed zoning changes outlined in their presentation to us.
One second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing is none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? None? We're good.
To clarify now, you said zoning, zoning bylaw? You said just the word zoning.
Zoning bylaw.
Zoning bylaw, okay.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I guess changing zoning by itself is the bylaw, right?
Zoning, I think, is yellow. Zoning bylaw is the green button.
Be careful, Hal. You'll end up in your shrubs up front of your house.
As long as he's clean.
Thank you, Carol.
All right. Next on the agenda is to consider ZBA alternate reappointment and possible votes. And we actually have everybody here tonight so we can go through this matter and see where we're going to go from here.
If I'm right, we only had one applicant, Lou Tassino, so.
I never heard back from.
Hasn't heard, yeah. You haven't heard back from that one yet?
So still no alternate?
Yeah. So I'll move that we appoint Lou Tassino to a term for three years as the alternate of the zoning board of appeals.
Can you have two motions?
Well, we got one before you.
No, I'm just asking a question.
He needs to get a second first. Hal, I sense the urgency or the desire of the board to discuss this further, so before I second your motion, I'll listen to.
Discussion.
Discussion.
All right, have a discussion first.
I assume pass over it and to give him more opportunity for somebody to come forward. Things haven't changed much on zoning, so.
This has been out there for a long period. I can't remember any time that we haven't reappointed somebody when there's nobody else that's competing for the position.
If you go back within, I think in the last two years, you did the exact same thing.
With what?
With my last reappointment, it was like that. It went on for a while.
I don't know if there was anybody else competing. This has gone on for a while, too.
No, no, no. Look, let's make something straight. I don't really care who's on the board, if they're an active participant and they bring value to it. But if we continually have problems on that board, that's what my problem is. I participate in that board and it's difficult to try to do your job and try to do it fairly and consistent for the residents of the town. That's what my concern is. If you want to do it, do it. Make the motion, you made the motion, if somebody wants to second, they second it. That's just my concerns. And I think they're valid concerns. If you watch the meetings, you can come to your own conclusions.
I know there was some comment made that a proposed applicant hadn't come to some of the meetings, but he only should be serving if he's appointed by the chairman to fill somebody's position. So an alternate does not attend if he doesn't want to unless he's going to be appointed to fill somebody's seat because of an absence or a conflict. So it's not like a regular member. There may be some member that's off in Florida or somewhere that isn't actively participating. I think that's what the restriction was of missing so many meetings was aimed at, not really an alternate situation. Because they only have any power when they're actually appointed by the chairman to sit on a particular matter.
And that's not my understanding. It hasn't been my understanding since I've been on it. And just give me the opportunity to explain my point of view on it. My understanding since I've been on that board, I got on in 2013, I served as an alternate for quite some time, is as an alternate, you are to show up each and every time because you are to fill in when there's not a regular member in order to have a full board. So why would you have alternate?
That's not what the state statute or the town's bylaws say. They say the chairman appoints when there is a vacancy or somebody cannot serve.
Then there needs to be some clarity and instructions given to the chair because we, just hand me up for one second. We have an applicant right now that had to come back in because there was a full member that wasn't there, the alternate was, the alternate wasn't there, the full member was there. Then the alternate, wait a minute, let me just get this straight. It's like who's on first here. So the full member was there, the alternate wasn't there. Then the alternate was there and the full member was missing. I had recused myself, and the reason why I recused myself was in close proximity to a family member. Wasn't a director, but I, just to keep it clear, I recused myself. I felt it was the right thing to do. Well, town council picked it up and said, you guys got a problem. Because you have to, you had two members at different times that weren't there. They voted on the case. The guy got awarded his variance, but it wasn't valid. So now the applicant's coming back again tomorrow night to hear the case again, it should be quick, in and out, hear the case again to get his official approval.
Yeah, it sounds like a real screw-up.
Because if somebody, what's that?
Sounds like a real screw-up, but the point is the chairman should be in control of who's going to be sitting and voting. And it's very specific that the chairman designates the alternate if they need him because of a conflict or an absence. So you know ahead of the meeting what's going to happen. So maybe he's not following that rule, but that's what the bylaw is. And we've adopted it. You don't have to have an alternate member, but this town did adopt that provision in providing for alternates. And I believe it's in the bylaws of the town. I know it's in the state statute, that the chairman designates if the alternate is needed or not. Otherwise, the alternate doesn't vote and isn't required to go to the meeting. So it's a backup for somebody that can't go. And that's what we're talking about.
I think an underlying problem, and I've watched a couple of ZBA meetings and, you know, the volunteers in this town are really truly an inspiration because some of the stuff is not easy. But my understanding is there's one member that hasn't exactly been attending many, right? So they're currently sitting at four and with vacations and what have you. I don't know if we're in a position not to accept volunteerism at this point in time. And I don't know what we can do to scream from the mountaintops for additional civic service, but it is a concern of mine if we're not operating the ZBA with a full slate.
I would agree. I mean, I think the biggest thing is, is that these boards and committees that we have, I think first of all, like if there is attendance issue. these boards and committees that we have, I think first of all, like if there is attendance issues that are going on, we need to reinforce with the chairmen of these boards that we have an attendance policy and they need to adhere to it. And that's not on alternate members, that's on regular members that are.
No, everybody, yeah.
And just kind of, you know, I've heard comment and, and witnessed some of the meetings to where occasionally people can be relatively disruptive to the meetings. And I think that we need to also reinforce with these chairmen that there's a code of conduct that's to be expected by your members, alternate members, regular members, is that you're going to conduct yourself calmly and professionally, you know, and make sure that you're not a disruption to the rest of the room. But I mean, to Hal's point, if the bylaw is sitting in place and saying, you know, this is how it works and it's at the chairman's discretion, then I think it's up to us to kind of foster to the chairmans to be a strong chairman and say, this is your purview, this is what you need to do. And if you don't feel that you're able to step up and do that, then perhaps you reorganize and find a stronger chair.
Well, and not, uh, one step further, and I consider myself included in what I'm about to say, is everybody should be, should be at least talk to, to explain what the, what the, not only the policies would be, but to remind everybody what their code of conduct should be, okay? If we, if you have a situation where you, you're in a butthole, you should recuse yourself from the hearing. And, and that was another concern that I had at a recent meeting. That it happened to be a very critical piece of property that should have been recused from. We just went through a public auction for the property. Persons asked to recu, uh, asked if they want to recuse because they're in a butthole? No. I think it puts the town in a, in a sticky point.
And how many members did you have on the board that night?
How many members did you have? One, I was on, um.
You got five people?
Five, uh, four full members and one alternate.
Okay, so four, you didn't need the alternate to do anything.
Okay.
Should, he shouldn't have voted. I don't think he's ever voted. I don't know, but it's the.
What I.
He's supposed to be the backup, the alternate. And if you get four people there, all you need is three to, to carry the day and vote and approve something.
Okay, if you, if you go back to when I just first started this.
Yeah.
I said, myself included, everybody should be reminded of their code of conduct. That's all I said, Hal. So I'm not attacking anybody or anything else. I'm bringing.
No, I'm just saying about recusing, I don't think you need to recuse if you're not participating. That's all.
Matter of opinion, I guess. Because if you don't recuse yourself, you could be considered influencing the board. That's why if you see, anytime that I recuse myself at any of these hearings, I walk out the door and stand in the hallway. So then there's no, and this is for the town's benefit.
Yeah, well, you're a full member. You should be doing that. You're serving on that particular matter.
Okay.
Otherwise, you're just a public citizen if you're not, unless you're actually one of the designated people to reach the decision.
Fully understood, Hal. I'm all set. I don't have anything else to add.
So to.
But to make something clear, there is a proper way to recuse yourself. Whether it's legally required or not, there's the other part of it is what is the public's perception? An individual who has the appearance of a conflict of interest, especially if they did not disclose it before the meeting, which they are obligated to do, should not sit at the table. Because even body language could be interpreted as deliberation. If you have to recuse yourself, whether you've been designated by the chair or not, we would respectfully remind people that the best way to handle it for the sake of the town and the credibility of its processes should be to stand up and leave. The only other reminder is that if you find yourself having to recuse yourself from so many cases that you are not actually able to participate in, in your board, that itself is an ethics violation. So there are those boundaries out there that people who follow local government are aware of. They may not be expert on it. They may not be, they may just know just enough to be dangerous. In other words, have a strong opinion about it, but we have to be mindful of the fact that a lot of people who watch and participate and listen may only engage once on a case that they care about and they don't know all these fancy ins and outs of designation versus not designating, stepping up or not stepping up. In the long run, I think many of the absences from one member in particular have been excused absences because they involve.
Extenuating.
Extenuating circumstances. So if an alternate member is not in attendance or is routinely recusing, the value of the alternate diminishes because the, the chair doesn't even have the option to designate that person to sit. And I don't know if there's any formula that says you specifically have to have four votes for something.
I think, Hal, you correct me if I'm wrong. Dan told me that we need a super majority on it, whether it's a variance or a special permit. You actually need four votes. That, that's what he said because I'm like so.
If we don't know the answer, we should ask the question.
Correct.
That if a variance requires four votes.
Right.
Then the chair would feel obligated to have at least four people sitting on the case. And would have to have that flexibility to make sure they had four to grant the relief sought by the applicant.
In fairness to the applicant.
The applicant should be aware of it.
Yeah.
But in fairness to the applicant, you hope there's five voting members.
Well, that's what I mean.
And to be fair, I, I wasn't aware that there was extenuating circumstances. I thought.
I think you're thinking of somebody else. No, there's.
Okay, so regardless, I, with the lack of additional bodies and the need for this board to have, you know, voting members at a given time, Hal, I would, I would entertain your, I'm not the chair. Go ahead.
Second.
I'll, I'll wing it. I would.
Because there's no second yet.
Yeah.
Did you pull it?
No, he's still got his motion out there.
Alright, then I'll second your motion.
Are you entertaining the seconding or are you just gonna?
I'm entertaining myself at this point.
All right, so the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any additional discussion on this topic? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
I think Mike's point is well taken and we ought to straighten out what the requirements of the ZBA a little bit.
And just for clarity.
Town council or whatever.
Just for clarity, this is only for the performance of the board. It has nothing to do with any personality issue. Doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. I'll work with anybody. It's just what's in the best interest of the town and the fairness to the applicants coming in. That, that's all I'm looking at.
Well, we ought to make sure that the, the board knows all the rules because we don't, I'm, I'm not certain. I, I do some zoning, but not, not a, don't pretend to be a zoning expert, though.
I will, I will give a lot of credit to Selectman Fitzpatrick. He does a very good job of doing his homework. So.
I try to.
He usually has a tendency to figure out where he's at and starts.
I think, since 2013, I only missed one ZBA meeting and that was because I was in the hospital.
Well, she didn't have Zoom calls then.
No.
So Matt, prior to you coming, there was a board code of conduct document that the selectman had worked on. It probably was last revisited around 2010, 2011, maybe a little later. It might make sense for us to revisit that document, refresh it and get that out to folks.
And we've, we've, you've cited it because you, you removed a member of CONCOM on the basis of violation of that code.
The code of conduct.
So we still.
I think that was two.
Two of them, actually. And, but it does need to be updated because there are some things that occur that are not directly addressed by the provisions of the code of conduct, so.
Could you add that to the next agenda, Lisa? Code of conduct. Yeah, code of conduct, review and discussion. All right. The fun part, we get to approve minutes.
Even though it's controversial.
Approving minutes? No. It could be.
I'd make a motion that we approve the general session meeting minutes for general, June 15, 2021.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
And on the June 15, 2021 executive session minutes, I move acceptance.
And retain?
And retaining all.
Second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 There's a lot of minutes.
I will abstain from June 29, so don't wait for me.
All right, well, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes for June 29, 2021 for regular session.
Second.
Okay, made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let the record reflect, Mr. Bonin abstained. And I would also make a motion that we approve the executive session minutes for June 29, 2021 and retain those minutes.
Second.
All right, motion's made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And Tim abstained. Which brings us to your report, Mr. Administrator.
Couple of house cleaning items from conversation that's already occurred tonight since smartphones make it possible to get answers quickly. Chapter 40A, section 15, the Massachusetts general laws, which is what creates zoning boards. The concurring vote of all members of the board of appeals consisting of three members and a concurring vote of four members of a board consisting of five members shall be necessary to reverse any order or decision of any administrative official under this chapter. I wonder if people know that. And to affect any variance in the application of any ordinance or bylaw. So that, for an applicant seeking relief in the form of a variance, has to have at least four people sitting to hear it. Because you can't vote on the things you don't sit and hear.
And four has obviously got to be unanimous.
Yeah, you got four. So that's the answer to that question.
Yeah, we had looked at moving that down to three and we thought that that wasn't applicant friendly.
Yeah.
You have to hit a hun, you know, you have to hit a thousand.
Uh, Mr. Manaric made a quick mention of it might be time to look at the zoning code and do some updating. And there was conversation this evening about split lots. This is one of the examples. There are many examples like this in the zoning bylaws in town, which I think are really, I, I think this was a model piece of legislation that was adopted, adapted for different localities by this attorney that wrote so many of them.
He did, yeah.
But this is thick. Where a zoning district boundary line divides any lot existing at the time of such zoning district is adopted, the regulations for any district in which the lot has frontage on a street may be extended not more than 50 feet into the other district. However, the land within this 50-foot area shall be controlled in a manner, in a constant manner, by the regulations applicable to the district which governs the larger law. That makes no sense.
That's right.
So just, it's time to clean this thing up. There's a couple of things, pre-existing, non-conforming, whether it's a special permit or a variance. Once, once, I think one day I drank like three lemonades and I was able to actually figure out that there was a distinction, but it was almost impossible to explain it to anybody else. Four lemonades is what it takes. So that's.
Is it Mike's heart, lemonade?
It was a lot. It took a lot of vitamin C. There's been conversation around open meetings. We didn't get it on this agenda. But I wanted to reiterate that Attorney Bowen's advice was sought on this matter and it's all or nothing, right? So if you.
For the Zoom meeting.
For Zoom, for remote participation in meeting by members of the board. That's the policy that you're setting. It is your purview and your purview alone is the select board. So the, the chair has had to remind some people along the way and we have to again remind people that open meetings law is kind of a serious thing and you cannot operate your committee against the policy of the select board, even if you disagree. If you have people right now participating remotely and voting on matters, it's entirely possible that your actions are not going to be.
Valid.
Valid. So it's a serious thing and.
And you do have that happening.
You do have that happening and it, it most definitely should not happen. And whether it changes the outcome or not doesn't necessarily matter either. Remote participation by members of boards and committees and Douglass under the current policy set by the select board is not allowed. And just have to remind people that. It's all well and good until there's a, a case where there is some back and forth in dispute and then.
And we set that on May 29.
Yeah, so.
Maybe we should be considering.
You know, it's one thing to say that if you've already scheduled a meeting and you've already posted the Zoom link and you've already made it clear to members. That's one thing, but it's something entirely different. We're, we're way past a month after. We're two months after and it shouldn't be happening anywhere.
If I could, Matt, some of the feedback that I have been getting, you know, not so much from boards, but from the, some of the smaller committees, specifically like Oktoberfest. And I believe I'd heard also from the library board of trustees, is that there are still people out there, whether we choose to personally agree with it or not, they're genuinely still afraid of this virus. And they're not able to get participation because these people are just not willing to come in person. You know, especially like considering all the things going around with Oktoberfest. It's a pretty big deal for the town and especially where this one's our 275th. That's going to be right in conjunction with it. I mean, would it make sense for this board, and I'm kind of asking the rest of the selectmen, to kind of reconsider our position that we've taken on this? Is, do we really want to hold our ground and say remote participation isn't there? And maybe I'm an unfair influence on it because I work for a technology company, but remote meetings is kind of the way the future's going. Like you're seeing more and more companies that are huge contact centers that are giving up brick and mortar facilities and saying, you can do your job remotely.
But, but they're not dealing with the open meeting laws. It's a different situation with, with this here. You, you have applicants and stuff coming in. I think that the, and I asked Matt about this. He said it's either all or nothing because I sympathize with the library trustees and the Oktoberfest committee and things like that, that they're not bringing in residents and stuff like that and having hearings. However, we have other boards that are having hearings and I think the applicant should be afforded the right to have the board members there. That's just my own. And I could easily.
How would you, how would you feel if the, that there was a, a, several people from a board there for an applicant for whatever they were seeking, would have somebody to talk to, but then a couple of members of the board could participate remotely, you know, sort of. I don't think, I don't know if we'll ever have a situation where everything is totally remote, you know, I mean.
So do you, and just playing devil's, I'm just playing devil's advocate with this thing as well. So, so Kevin, you want to go, I want to be home. You know, I, I got to be home too. Tim, what do you think? You, you going to have that going back and forth or is it always the same members each meeting that would be remote? Because we also ran into a situation where if you have somebody that's here half of the year and they're part of the area for half of the year, but they're still participating and, and doing whatever they need to do for that particular board. It's just part of the conversation.
Think of a blizzard situation too, which is difficult for people to come in and you don't want to, you want to take something and get it done. I can argue both ways on it. I mean, I just think maybe it's good to think about it a little bit more. Keep it the way it is for now and.
If there's not a way of splitting it, it's all or nothing, I would say then they all participate if the, if it's a, I think it's important for us to all show up at the meeting and be here and do our part and not be remote.
Having sat on the board throughout the entire pandemic and for a good chunk of those meetings, it was myself and the vice chairman, well, the then vice chairman, Mr. Coit. it was myself and the Vice Chairman, well, the then Vice Chairman, Mr. Cortez. And I will say, I prefer even being a technologist. I liked having the whole board here. It was a very happy day when we actually got Hal back out of the house and, and we had a full board sitting here.
Right, with my wife's permission.
With your wife's permission, which was important.
No, but it is, even with the, this, we go a little bit back in the agenda, the, the conversation that Hal had and I had back and forth, that's important to be sitting in front of each other so we understand. It's just part, part of the process, so we understand it. There's no hot feelings, there's no nothing. It's just part of the process. And you don't get that if somebody's up on the screen and one person's sitting in the room.
No, it is, there is a certain level of-
I think there's a value to being here.
There is, and there's some personal touch that gets lost with, with remote participation. You know, and I know one of the hurdles that we'd had in boards here was especially like zoning or, or the planning boards, is trying to get plans and things like that. The technologies come far enough along, and I don't know where we ever landed if we ever thought about doing a smart board or something like that, which would very quickly take care of the sharing part.
To be able to do it. You have a conservation that has the luxury of having Steve there that's very savvy with the screen sharing and, and using his cursor and going around and narrating the whole process for them, but we don't have that on any other boards. And I don't think we have the resource to have somebody like that on any other boards.
Some of the boards are really just advisory. I mean, you take the Oktoberfest, I mean, I'd say more power to them if they want, they get, they, they produce a product, that's where we're interested. So if they want to work, work that way-
I personally don't have a problem with that. Town Council has, has advised Matt that it's either all or nothing.
Could we do-
That's where the problem is.
Could we-
I guess the question would be is could we allow remote participation to all boards and committees at the discretion of the Chair? So it's open, and it's up to that Chairman if you're going to show up and sit, or am I going to allow you to participate remotely? Isn't that kind of dancing a gray area?
I don't like answering legal questions because I'm not an attorney, but I, the way we're taught this particular statute is you could just vote, since the legislature has extended this safe harbor from open meetings for a while now. You could simply just vote to allow remote participation. It would apply to all boards and commissions, and then the Chair could, individual Chairs could decide. But once you, once you approve it, individual Chairs wouldn't be able to compel the attendance of, of anyone. Because if they wanted to have a live quorum, they couldn't. They would, they would have to do it. They would have to roll with whatever their members decided.
Almost be an interpersonal covenant-
Yeah.
To be a part of this. I'm with you, Mike, on the in-person. I think that's really important. Kevin did, however, mention, and I think is very valid, especially given the recent headlines, that people, maybe not on this board, but on other boards, you know, have medical reasons to stay away. So I would actually weigh that heavily if we were to revisit that policy.
I think it's something that we should, at the next meeting, revisit it again.
Would it, would it be worth getting input from all the Chairs?
That would be huge.
That way, instead of dictating what they have, what they don't have, get the input from them, and if you, if you have a strong majority that's in favor of it or against it, then you could at least have something to hang your hat on with your decision instead of sitting here dictating what they do.
I like that.
Yeah.
It's a good thought.
I'm sympathetic to having everybody there when you're making presentation with documents and the screen share is not always the best way to, to make your detailed plans. You can't put everything up there, I don't think. Maybe you can, you know better than I do, but you can put a lot up there.
I've participated in remote meetings with zoning boards in other towns that, some of them are very well organized, and they have the technology and the ability to do everything, and it works smoothly. I just don't think we're there at that, at this point. That's what, that's what my only sticking point is with that.
Yeah, I think as a town, we have the technical infrastructure there. I think it's a matter of getting the right support out to the boards.
We're getting closer with it.
Oh, yeah.
Is this a hologram machine by chance?
It could be.
Panoramic camera with a microphone.
All right, well, that's the answer. Let's get a hologram.
Working on it, Tim.
So, back to my report then.
Sorry, didn't mean to hijack your-
No, no, that was, the whole idea was to have conversation.
Can I interrupt real quick before I lose my thought? Should we have Lisa reach out to the, the Board Chairman to get their input?
If you don't mind taking that on, Lisa.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you brought it up, smart board. We were working with a preferred, you know, statewide contract vendor, and the price that came back after the demo that was here was ridiculous, and I wasn't going to go forward with it. For instance, the cart the thing was on was a thousand bucks, and they wanted like eight grand for the screen.
So, yeah, that's kind of fifty.
So, talking to our IT contractor, he said, you know, we can beat all of this. We just, we just have to pay attention. And so he was able to find a cart for three hundred dollars. It's heavy-duty steel gauge cart, you know. So that's sitting there in a box, and the, the smart board we can get for about three thousand dollars. That's what my original thought is, the project would be about thirty-five hundred bucks, but it would be well worth it. The meetings that we had in this room, they were mostly during the day. There were some union negotiations, and there were some tech review, where we had the screen and we were using it on the demo, and it really was a huge help. And if we can tie it into the cable broadcasting capacity, then you'd be able, even people at home would be able to follow along with discussion around plans that right now, it's either on a share screen that may not be the best resolution, or the people just aren't using it at all. And they're referring to things that they're looking at, but if you're following along at home, you can't see it. So, we still are going to get a little bit deeper into the fiscal year before we figure out where he is in terms of his operational budget, but we should be able to swing it with money that we've already put in the budget. We had our product, project kickoff meeting last week with Marcus Communications that's doing the Public Safety Radio Project and setting some of the scope and the pace of work. We are still, they are still pursuing FCC licenses for the new VHF band for highway and water. So they'll join everyone else on VHF. We will begin negotiations as well with Industrial Communications that owns the tower in Webster. And American Tower, this is, was new, they hadn't told me this, but the entity that owns the tower up at the, the water tank site also has to, to grant permission. Now, in my view, I think the statute actually says that public safety has preemptive ability to get space, a certain amount of space on any tower. We don't really have to ask, but we also don't set our own rent. So, that, that, there will be a monthly charge, and we have budgeted all along eight hundred dollars a month for Industrial Communications in particular. The guys from Marcus think that that, there's upside, that it might be higher than eight hundred dollars a month. We'll cross the bridge when we get to it. We haven't actually had communication with Industrial Communications yet, so we'll see where they get with that. The only other thing, so they're going to start ordering equipment. They're going to put two, two small installations at the high school, and they've done the, the load rating is one pound per square foot. That's just about the only construction piece of this. The rest of this is purchase of equipment off the statewide contract. So, we still anticipate completing that project before the end of the fiscal year, before June thirtieth. There'll be extensive testing that will have to be done to make sure it's ready for acceptance. Other capital projects are in the process of being released. I'm working on the RFQ for the design work for the generator project here in the municipal center. The project is complicated by the configuration of the electrical service in the building. So the building was originally four hundred amps, came into a really nice-looking nineteen twenty-six Westinghouse box with, you know, levers, brake, circuit breakers on them, and they're like, you know, door handles, and-
Revive Frankenstein.
And pretty much, you know, it lives, right? But there's another four hundred amps that comes in, so now that Westinghouse box is a feed, is a sub-feed from the main box that comes out of the street, and it's on the other end of the building. Hooking a generator up to that is not overly, it's not impossible, but it's, it could be a little bit more challenging. The real, I think the crux of the matter is going to be that original four hundred amp service probably allows more voltage variation than modern appliances can tolerate.
It's not clean power.
So it's not clean power. It's not, it's well beyond three volts plus or minus, and that-
And some of the breakers don't work anyways.
And one of them doesn't work. It was replaced with a, a small sub-panel. So, when you go down there, you'll see, it didn't work, the two thousand and one building report identified that it didn't work. They didn't replace the service. They replaced that breaker with a small sub-box that comes out of it. So, the project requires the design professional to take into consideration the conditions in the entire building when submitting the design. So, it's made the RFQ a little bit more complicated. Update on the fire station, which as you know was struck by lightning. And the lightning strike revealed the electrical weaknesses in the building. A survey has been done by electrical engineer. The chief, Assistant Chief, and I had a conference call with the electrical engineer, and we're going to have to go to Capitol Committee for a fall town meeting request. This project's going to, is going to be upwards of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars just because of the actual transformation from four hundred amp single, single-phase service to eight hundred amps of, six hundred, six hundred amps at three phase is pretty substantial, and-
So it's a service upgrade as well as a generator?
We're going from a transformer on the pole, a transformer against the building on a concrete pad, and properly grounding the building because it's not properly grounded. Installation of additional receptacles around the building. It's, and the generator, which is a thirty-key W, is way too small, way too small for that building. We can't really fool around with this. This has to move along. The fire station is, is an emergency response, and there's so much of what they do there is powered with electricity.
Can I ask, I was thinking, you know, sure, the Fire Department, I know what I know, but you got four bays. How much electricity do they really need?
A lot.
A lot.
I know, just-
They're running their e-dispatch service that's out of there, and then I believe there's two other services set there.
So they're going to be a location for, one of the primary locations for the equipment for the public radio system. They have their own computer server there and, and Wi-Fi connections. But then almost everything they use is charged. Their radios, the tablets-
Cardiac monitors.
Cardiac monitors.
The ambulances.
The ambulances, the trucks.
The trucks, yeah.
And then, if you want to geek out about this thing, the thing that will cause surge is those massive garage door openers. So if you have to let three pieces of equipment out, and you, you want those doors all to open at the same time, the building is eight big doors, but if they're just doing three, it's going to cause a pretty big spike.
Matt and I had recently walked, was down at the fire station, and the Assistant Chief pointed out that when the generator comes on, it can't open the doors. You have to manually open the doors. There's not enough power to run.
Time is muddled, right?
Can't open the doors.
So in the electrical engineer's opinion, the building is permanently running in brownout condition, which again, modern appliances are not made to tolerate that much variance in voltage. So if they're permanently in brownout, it's no wonder that we are constantly replacing capacitors in different motors that are there.
In defense of when it was originally built, the electrical needs back then were suitable.
It was proper for the time it was built, yeah.
There wasn't nearly as much going on. It's the whole digital age, Tim. It's killing everyone.
Without hopefully disclosing my ignorance of such matters, can the generator also handle the public works building?
The new one would, no, because you're still going to have, it's a long run, by the way.
Plus, it's too long of a distance.
But it's-
I think Public Works has it, has it-
They have their own-
Yeah, they took the one from the middle school.
Yeah. It may still be too small, but they're getting better use out of it. Community Development Department, as you are aware, made an interim appointment for a department head there for a couple of months. This all came about very quickly because we were getting to the end of the contract with CMRPC. Ian did a very nice job. I think people were just starting to get used to him and, you know, like his style, and we switched again with not a lot of notice. But it was CMRPC that had arranged this, and I was more concerned about getting the workflow done and making sure there was somebody there to pick up immediately after Ian left. I've been doing this a long time. I've interviewed lots and lots of people, especially for land use functions, and after about thirty minutes listening to Eve, I knew that she was really, really sharp.
Yeah, she is, yeah.
And has done such a wonderful job for other towns in setting up their planning departments. You could just, she was a glib with really important answers, and she's only going to be here for a few months. So it was, to me, it was one way to kick the thing in the pants and get it moving.
She participated today's meeting too.
Yeah, she was great in tech review today. Website considerations. I'm paying attention to the feedback of our staff, and the Civics Plus website is just really hard to work with, and it's, it's preventing us from keeping public-facing information up to date, and it's also preventing us from communicating with the public. Originally, the idea was that there would be news flashes and other things pushed out to, to folks, and then if folks had complaints, it would come back. Well, you know, there are so many widgets and toggle switches and God knows what else, and Civic Plus, the toggle switch got turned off. So, people were writing complaints and then thinking that their town government was blowing them off because we never answered. But before she retired, Suzanne went and checked on it to make sure it was working.
And she turned on the switch before she left?
She hit the toggle switch, and boom, we got all these messages now, you know, and-
Don't forget.
It's, you know, we can joke about it, but it's actually kind of a failure of the idea of a virtual town hall. It has to work. It has to be easier. So I'm starting to entertain conversations with vendors. Stuff is expensive. We're not going to make any decisions until a board approves and agrees. But we got to learn about what our options are because if it's not easy enough for the staff to use, they won't use it, or they'll deprioritize it, and we'll start to really become completely without credibility when it comes to the information that we post because who knows whether it was updated recently or not.
Is this minutes and agendas and-
Minutes I want to get to in a second, but we've had to hold on to the old bulletin board from the, the old website because it's got its tentacles into everything, right? So it's what people felt comfortable using, so Civics Plus basically built us a bridge to our old bulletin board, and because that's what people are comfortable using. So before we do anything, we'll have the folks who are interacting the most with the calendaring function talk through vendors and see, well, how does it work with them? One of the vendors I spoke to today, Granicus, yeah, this is a form. You, you log into your account, you fill in the calendar with information, what, like we all would on any appointment that we put on our phones, and hit submit, and then it not only publishes to the website, publishes to your Facebook account, your Twitter account, becomes a document that you can print out and hang in the hallway, like that, all at once, and it's not this torturous process of uploading a PDF and making sure that it takes and all the rest of it. So we're looking into it. I've had to, begun searching for a minute taker. The minute taker resigned some time ago because the workload was far more than she had bargained for, so I'm actually looking to get a couple of different people. So, rather than have the burden of FinCom, Capital, all, all of the busy boards, you know, planning board three-hour meetings, zoning board two-hour meetings, just try to find two or three people who will focus on a specific board, get to know the names of the people and the terminology and do the minutes.
Can I just, just brainstormed an idea?
Sure.
Our cable staff, who we love dearly, I wonder if they would be a avenue to look at. They are here. I know they're manning the cable side, but I wonder if a couple of them would be interested in-
So that was my first inquiry with anybody who has gotten reduced hours or no hours as a result of the change in the way meetings are being held. as a result of the change in the way meetings are being held. And I've yet to hear back, so I consider that to be an internal posting, but if I don't hear back soon, I'm going to go to a broader posting.
There are companies out there that can actually go onto our feed and it's AI transcription services and it's really not expensive.
No.
Well, they'll just transcribe what it said, whereas minutes, really good minutes just kind of paint a picture.
A lot of the ways that these work, like Google's one of them, that has an AI component that goes onto meeting spaces, Zoom actually uses it. Tour will go through and you can actually get speech inflection, you can build rules as to what gets highlighted, what gets brought, you can ask it to do shorthand, like it's truly AI, that whatever you want those minutes to be, that's what they'll be.
Wow. If you swear in Polish, it'll translate it.
Right, it will.
So it's no good for me.
It's our robot, a half court shot, so I think mankind's in trouble, but that's another story.
It's so much crazier than that. So I'll just digress for a second. Code Red, which provides our emergency communication service, is, also has an entity that will actually search the internet for any feed, any information that's important to you and alert you if there's a threat. So it's ridiculous how much data it's processing in nanosecond, but it's constantly monitoring all internet traffic. And if it's relevant to the town of Douglas, if it looks like it's, if certain words are being used, flags get tripped, then it'll send you a message, say, "Here, look at this."
The company that's doing that's called Affinity.
Yeah.
It's an Avaya company.
So, get out your copy of Terminator 1, Terminator 2, try to pick up any tips you might need to know to survive the next 25 years.
Do you know what the server that powers Affinity is called? Skyhook.
Yeah.
Don't get them started, man.
That's out of Terminator.
So the deputy assessor's position has been posted, we've got lots of interest, so we have a good, strong pool. I know that the board and the principal assessor are starting to do interviews soon, so that position will be filled and that person who's currently sits in it is going over to the board of health for a part-time job. Last but not least, I hate to be the person who says it out loud, even though we're all watching it, but coronavirus is still out there and it's, yesterday were the 2,000 new cases in Massachusetts. This will be different, obviously. If it's not as contagious with vaccinated people or as serious for vaccinated people, you've taken a whole big chunk of the population and you've changed the way they experience the pandemic. But for those who did not choose to get a vaccine, it can still spread very rapidly. So we're starting to see a little bit of a trend here, that's a much deeper trend down south and out west in certain places. We're monitoring the situation, there's no need to change any policies at present time. Massachusetts has a very high vaccination rate compared to most of the rest of the country. But the possibility exists that we may have to look at mask mandates again and that's going to be a huge conversation with the school system and I don't want to go anywhere near it because there's really high emotions on all sides. And my wife and I are sending three to school this year and really not enthusiastic about putting them on a mask, but what are you supposed to do?
It's not fun to wrangle little kids into a mask.
It's not, and they won't keep it on anyway. I just, to me, I don't really see the point, but-
No, my grandson drank his chocolate milk through his mask.
Well, that could, that was fun though, because you can make a noise.
Yeah.
Was he watching you first?
He might have been.
So that's the end of my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Matt. Are there any open session topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of this meeting? Seeing as none, I would look for one of your motions.
Sure. Make a motion that we move into executive session to discuss collective bargaining with our friends from the Water Commission, interest in real property litigation, and we'll end their night with an investigation discussion.
Do you want to wait for them to convene their meeting and also go into executive session?
Yeah, why don't we do that, Tim?
Well, the camera?
We need to hear Bob, we need to hear Bob too.
You want to pull your meeting to order and then go into executive session at the same time as us?
Yeah, sure.
Matthew, should we do Bob's thing first or, what's the title? Do you want to do that?
Yeah, because there is no other reason for them to be here.
All right.
All right. We're done, our openly water and salt commission meeting at 13:00 and 15:00 for purpose of collective bargaining. All right. We're going to executive session, make a call for the chairman.
Need a roll call vote.
Roll call vote. All right.
Great. So we need a roll call vote now.
You do.
Do we need a second on yours?
Yeah, second.
Second.
All right, spin second.
Hal, Dave, a side.
Kevin Morris, aye.
Bone, an aye.
Patrick, aye.